Oh.
I don't know, Chris doesn't have that problem.
Okay.
No, it's just you, I think.
I think it is.
I think you may have been struggling a little bit there yourself.
I was fine. There it's on now.
I was fine on EDA meetings.
Yeah, that's good. All right. Get that out of our system. We did. Okay. Um, first thing we do is review the minutes from back in January. If anybody has any additional comments or corrections, if they'd be kind enough to share them, otherwise I will look for a motion to approve the minutes, please.
Make the motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That takes care of the minutes. Recap of our discussion from February. What do we want to recap?
Well, I mean, I just, uh, obviously, we did have a quorum last month. Um, we did have a good thorough discussion, um, of the topics at hand. So you can kind of see the, the public hearings there that, that we'll have tonight that were, um, two of them are holdovers. And actually, out of our discussion last month came this discussion of not just the landscaping ordinance, but also the screening requirements. So that was something where, um, the folks from ANA, the builder was here. And we, we kind of laid it out for him, I think, you know, what we really wanted to do in that area, which was stick to the code. And in this case, um, we recommended a fence. Um, you know, they were, they were doing their job, but they were trying to maybe find a lower cost solution, which I respect, but I mean, the code is what it is. And that, you know, our job isn't to change that. It's to, well, tonight we'll talk about it, but, you know, it is, it's what the code is. So I think at the end of the day, and, and, you know, Paul or, or Tom or anybody who was there last, um, time, you know, I think that was kind of what we wanted to talk about was in addition was the screening requirements and see if there's any more flexibility we could come up with.
Yeah, I guess from my recollection, the hijack, or pardon me, the, the conversation kind of got hijacked talking about a very specific property as opposed to anything specific to how we wanted to amend the ordinance. But, yeah, that was.
Right.
My recollection. Um, do we just want to move on to the public hearings? Uh, first one this evening is landscaping ordinance amendment.
Maybe Ian, you could take that.
Yeah, um, we did have a pretty good discussion about, um, the various questions that I had included in the meeting, um, last time. Um, but based on those discussions, I did kind of modify each of the questions that I included for the meeting tonight. So if we want to go through each of those, we could do that or, um, let's see. Um, so the first one I have here is talking about requiring canopy trees for one and two unit residential developments. And so with that, there were a couple of things that were discussed, um, either taking it out of the code entirely since it doesn't really get followed right now. Um, or two, we could just be a little bit more flexible with it and allow trees to be planted um, in the front yard as opposed to just in the right of way. So it's a little complicated though, because if they're in the right of way, the, the city is responsible to maintain them, but if they're in the front yard, then it would be the property owner's responsibility. So just something to be aware of with that.
Ian, I have a question.
Yes.
When those trees get big enough and they start heaving up the sidewalk, whose responsibility is that? The city's or the landlord?
Cities.
The cities? Okay.
Well, I mean, typically, we haven't actually had to replace a lot of them. What ends up happening is a lot of times the, uh, the public works department will come in and they'll shave those corners so that it still works, you know, as a sidewalk.
Sure.
But, um, I know, you know, a lot of communities, I mean, we, the council here has not chosen to enforce its ability to require homeowners to pay for replacement of sidewalks. I mean, for example, if you go to Rochester, when I was a kid living in Detroit, you know, my mom and dad would say, well, the city would come through and they would put X's on the sidewalk that was getting replaced and they'd send you a bill in the mail. And that was, that was it. Now here, they kind of go, well, please do it yourself or get it done. We have had to have, um, some of the connections made. We've, the councils forced people to make the connections where they haven't had sidewalk at all in some cases. Um, but typically in the past, we haven't had like some whole scale program where we've required people to replace sidewalks.
Okay.
Well, for having people put a tree in their right of way, if you don't have enough footage in your yard, because you've got to be 25 feet away from your driveway, you've got 25 feet away from your, I don't think that, that should be in our, at all. Because you're just going to have way too many issues down the road trying to cram a tree into somebody's yard and telling somebody they have planted a tree where there's some people that don't want trees at all.
So. I was saying, I think, last time is that most people are probably going to opt for trees anyway and they'll just install them themselves. So I don't think we're going to end up seeing entire developments with no trees because I think people are going to just choose to do it, um, whether or not we require it.
And we've never enforced it from day one and.
Apparently.
I think that's probably the biggest.
And you'd have a tough time trying to.
It's, you know, isn't really a law if you're not enforcing it. Not really. And, I mean, I do just, I think require, I mean, I think, I can see why people do it. I think I brought that up previously. I can see why, you know, you don't want a tree desert where there's no trees at all.
No, no.
I mean, I will say, my subdivision, newer subdivision, there are not that many trees. You know, I went back and after we had that conversation, then actually like, it's probably about half the lots that have one tree or two. So about half of them don't have any trees at all. Now, doesn't mean that won't, they won't ever have a tree. They could put one in later.
Sure.
But it does mean that, that the age that that subdivision started, which is kind of how you see all through town, you know, when that subdivision started, like here's how it looked, you know, and now they've all grown up and so you've got that nice canopy. In my neighborhood, right now at least, if that's how it happens, you'll have about half of them that don't.
Well, and the other hard part about, some people, when they're buying a house, they're barely getting by and then now you're telling them they've got to plant a $200 or $400 tree in their front yard. Some of it can't afford it. They're going to cut. That's going to be the last thing I would want to put in my yard. You know, I'm going to cut corners and that'd be the first thing I cut. I'd add it later. I mean, honestly, my house, I didn't add it for five, six years in the front yard. Doesn't mean it's right. I mean, some people gladly put them in, but some people don't want them in right away.
Is Casson a tree city?
It is.
Sure is. And that's why the park department does the, park department does the.
Well, it's longer than that even.
Boulevard tree program.
Thirty-seven years.
Because of that.
Long time. I beg back.
Which I heard is pretty popular.
And the only reason I bring it up is I don't know the requirements to maintain that and how that may have any sort of impact on.
Well, you can still buy them. Every year, the park department buys so many trees.
We have a Boulevard tree program. I think that's one of the big.
And they pay for half and you pay for the other half and they plant them.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I don't think we'd have, I don't think we'd have a, an issue with the, uh, that program. That's a good question, but I don't think we would. Because I think based on the, the way that works, either between planning and cutting trees down, we have method requirements there.
People gladly put them in. It's just, I don't know if it's something that you, if we're not going to enforce, why would we have it?
Well, and I think that's the biggest thing. If we're not going to enforce it, if we don't have a mechanism to really enforce it and, you know, unless you want to have Ian go out inspecting every single lot, which he could do. He's glad to go outside in the summertime. He loves it, you know. It's good for him. Um, but, but really, I mean, it's, it's just an extra thing that, I mean, to be honest with you, I didn't even know we had the requirement for two trees in this lot.
I didn't either.
Until we started digging into this, you know, and I read through the code on a regular basis, but it's not what I'd caught, you know.
Well, and I think it's probably more on the, you know, spacing of the trees rather than just say two canopy trees, because trees come in different sizes and that sort of thing. And sometimes, uh, like if you did want to require something, it would be more on a, on a spacing basis that's appropriate for the species of tree that you're planting.
And the Boulevard tree program through the park rec has a spacing requirement. I mean, it's 25 feet off your driveway. It's 25 feet apart, you know, so.
And they're probably picking trees that hopefully aren't going to tear up the sidewalks.
Well, and the, you, you buy them through the city. They pick certain trees and then you can pick and choose through.
The homeowner gets to pick the tree.
Out of a list.
But the park and rec director will guide them towards the right kind of tree.
That is one of the goals, is to have a root system that goes down, not out so much. Because in historically, you're right. I mean, a lot of times you get heaved sidewalks, you know.
And it's just such a terrible place to plant a tree. You've got, you've got, you've got a what? Six foot strip?
Yeah.
Sidewalk and street.
I mean, I think if it's done properly.
I love the trees.
Yeah, I think if it's done, I think if it's done properly, it isn't a problem. You know, I mean, you could see in a lot of areas of town where there aren't any heaved sidewalks. I mean, where it worked out, but, but you're right. I mean, sometimes it's counterintuitive to what you'd think, you know, you'd want to have really.
This winter, they did a really good job of maintaining the park and rec and the street department because they had spare time and they weren't falling snows.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's a good point. I mean, we're actually done with our ash trees now in Casson.
And, I mean, they were through our neighborhood trimming.
Yeah, mine too.
And they did a nice job.
They did.
So. I'm, I'm not against trees. I'm just against the city putting it in there and not enforcing it.
Sure.
So it sounds like we're leaning towards taking that out of the code then. Okay. All right. All right, next question.
I guess, since there's so many things, do we kind of want to have like a actual vote on each individual item? Or are you just going to, you're going to review everything?
We're starting our public hearing right now, right?
We don't even, well. There, there's no public. I think we are in the discussion prior to the public hearing.
All right, fair enough.
So why don't we, we continue this discussion?
Okay.
That sounds good.
Do you want to open and close it quick?
I would love to. I will go ahead and open the public hearing and I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Thank you, Tom. Good job.
Highlight of my evening. I get to do it two more times.
True. Okay, so I think that they'll be looking for act, like Ian's out looking for action. Paul, were you going to make a motion?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, so we're looking at, uh, item E1 here, right?
That's right.
Um, I, I think, I guess, the motion would be to strike that one from our, our ordinance.
Want to do it individually or collectively?
I guess if you did them individually, then you know for sure everyone was discussing.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Cause there's, we got like, what, six, eight of these things to go through?
So we've got a motion to strike, mine aren't labeled E1, as it pertains to two canopy trees in the right of way? Yes, sir, is that correct?
Yep, yep, I'm making that motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That takes care of item E1.
Um, so the next one is about requiring a minimum number of trees per street frontage and a new number of shrubs per square footage of new construction. These are two different sections of the code, but I kind of lumped them together. So with that, there's a few different things. One, we talked about is adding the alternative compliance language, which would be the new, um, so I guess it's E3 labeled and E4. The large section red, which comes from the Green Step Cities model ordinance. So basically what it does is give, um, credits for certain other features aside from landscaping if there are certain conditions of the property that can't support the minimum number otherwise required. So then there was some other discussion at the last meeting about specifically the, the street frontage and the trees and whether it would be possible to, you know, change that. So it's also based on the square footage of new construction similar to the, the shrub requirement, which is an option two, um, or else the language could be something like, like all additions, expansions or additional structures shall require, um, an additional two plants per 1,000 square feet of new construction. And those plants can be trees or shrubs, something like that, just so you get a choice. It's one option. Or leave it at this is and add the alternative compliance section, um, just to be an option there.
So I, I like the alternative compliance section. And this note that Ian's gotten here about the, um, square footage thing, I suggested, because if you read, if you go all the way down to F2 for parking lots, we've got this, uh, one square foot of landscaping per 10 square foot of parking. My thought was, is why don't we just say the same thing, but for all development space? Right? So if there's 1,000 square foot of parking, 1,000 square foot of property building being put up, why don't we just say, you know, one square foot per 1,000 area that's getting developed needs to be landscaped? Then we could basically strike all of F and replace A, so then we don't have the street frontage requirement, you know, because that kind of requires, it look, it's based more on like your lot's shape more than just your size, um, which apparently causes issues in certain situations. But I'd, I'd still also like to see three in there, the alternative, because it just, it gives us more flexibility, um, with the developers, especially on larger projects.
So this count for a house too, if you're building a brand new house?
No, this is, uh, E2, all residential uses of three or more and non-residential uses. So this would be commercial and industrial only, right?
I think the catalyst for this was a little bit of the Minnesota Ag expansion, you know, on the south side of 14 where frankly, we've had a hard time getting a good plan out of them in terms of, you know, having a good landscape plan. And there was a number of reasons they said they couldn't do it. You know, it's an expansion of an older building, which, you know, we understand. You know, it's, there's, I mean, there's a little difference between a brand new building that's starting scratch and what we want it to look like from saying, you know, expansion in an area. You know, Ian's got in here, for example, like City Old Colgan's building, like, you know, they want to tear something down and put a new building up there. How much space would they really have to do landscaping? Wouldn't be much. So, I mean, part of the reason he's talking about exempting some of these areas as well, I think, it helps us with those kind of historic businesses that are looking at changes.
Because I know part of the Minnesota Ag group too was they had right of way on both sides where they can't plant nothing in the right of way. Cause the county didn't approve, won't approve it and MINDOT won't approve it. Cause that's their right of way. That's the way I understood it from them. So the other question I'm going to have, and I'm just going to throw this out there. So let's say you go in there, you require them to plant the one or two plants per 1,000 square feet. Um, next year they die. Who goes back? Are we going to go back and enforce to have them replant it? You know, I mean, how much time are we going to spend to keep going back? Say, whoop, you died, one died, you got to replace it, you know, two died.
Think that's in here, but.
But I mean, are we going to go back? I mean, I just, I'm a firm believer, if you're going to have an artist, you got to follow through. If you're going to not follow through, then it's kind of a silly ordinance app. We're, we've been going through ordinances.
We've got a lot of those down.
I know, and we're trying to clear them up.
Yeah, I mean, I think realistically, you know, the goal is to create a nice aesthetic for businesses.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, even if you had a couple of trees die, if the aesthetic looks okay, I suspect we're probably not going to go back and change it. I mean, you know, at the end of the day, our goal is to, I mean, when someone fills out a permit, they're saying, this is what I'm going to do. You know, and the CMS goes and they say, oh, this is what they're doing. You know, it doesn't necessarily, we've had many occasions where someone's permit they filled out isn't exactly what they actually end up doing. Sometimes that's inadvertent, they make a mistake or, I think, or maybe it was even, you'll remember this and maybe some of the people have done the, you know, a couple of years ago, we had somebody who had built a garage right into an easement and they wanted to expand that garage and then we had a lawsuit about that. And it was, it wasn't the, the current homeowner's fault. It wasn't the previous homeowner's really fault. It was just one of those things that was a mistake. They didn't maybe realize it and the title people didn't catch it.
Yep.
And ended up being a lawsuit. Now, that's what we want to try to avoid is where it didn't really help anybody. The lawsuit didn't, you know, I mean, it didn't help us, didn't help them. And we, the city ended up then having issue, but it was them and the title company and the people that owned it before, so.
But it's, takes on time.
I think we have to trust that people are going to do the best they can to make sure the trees stay alive. Because if they're buying a tree and they're planting it, we want to.
Oh, I get it.
We hope that they're going to keep it alive, you know.
Yeah, section M is our continued enforcement section. It's apparently required with the property, changing hands and binding, all the kind of legal stuff I think you'd expect to see. Not that we've probably overused it, but.
I think with any code, you know, you have, kind of like we were saying Tim, is you have a combination of what's actually written down in black and white. That's the enforcement mechanism. But there's the intent behind it of what caused it to be written in the first place. And when it comes to enforcement, you have to take the intent into account.
Oh, that's absolutely right. Yep.
So in terms of minimum number of trees per street frontage or minimum number of shrubs, is that anything we want to stick our nose into? I would be inclined to say no as well.
I mean, I think at the end of the day, I mean, and we talked about this a little bit last month. I think, you know, Ian needs flexibility. I think what we need to require is a landscape plan. And at the end of the day, you know, somebody has to submit a landscape plan with their development and he can look at that and say, you know, is this appropriate or not based on the type of building? And, I mean, they're still going to have to put the effort in to make a landscape plan, which doesn't have to be complicated, but it's going to show what they're doing. I don't care if it's flower beds or bushes or trees or, you know, whatever. I think you, you guys are absolutely spot on when you're saying like, what's the point? The point is to try and make a development look as good as it can. And if we can get somebody who's willing to do that, you know, without having to force them to put two trees every 100 square feet or something, that's what we want to do.
Yeah.
You know, and I know for Ian's sake, he's got enough things going on that, uh, you know, going out and doing a tree inspection every week is probably not going to be a top of his schedule. Although he does like to sit, likes to get out, you know, it's good. Take your lunch, have a picnic out there, you know, that sort of thing.
Anyway, I just want to make it.
Be more exciting on parking spots.
Well, that's true. He gets all the fun stuff, parking studies and tree results, a lot of that sort of thing.
I want to make it simple, but yet effective.
I mean, I, I think you'd strike almost, I mean, you could strike a lot of this language, honestly. Is it something that, it, it was designed for a metro?
Yes.
And in the outstate part of Minnesota, you're going to probably not see a lot of enforcement on a lot of these things. You don't probably even see up in Golden Valley or, you know, realistically, you know, somebody's got to come in, they're going to, you know, you go up and see one of those new subdivisions up there with apartment complexes, they put trees in, you know, park apartments. They put trees in, they put shrubs in, they put landscaping, because they want it to be attractive to, to customers and to people too.
Yeah, exactly. And you know, the people putting the businesses in, they're going to.
Right.
Take the time and.
I do think, you know, right now we're at this apex of the housing market, like everything's worth a lot. What you end up happening is you see when, when the housing market tanks or when, for example, like back in 08, you go to a lot of these businesses when they failed, that landscaping all died. Because nobody was paying attention to it. And that's really where our opportunity is to go back when there's a new owner and say, hey, you've got to go and, you've got to fix this because it isn't, it's aesthetically, it's not pleasing.
Yes.
A lot of owners are going to do it anyways, but that's kind of our opportunity when there's, sort of that sort of opportunity.
But I look at, you know, should the minimum number of trees, parking lots to be landscaped with trees, should the city require no more than 30% of, of required trees are of the same species? Should the city require specific sizes of plants? I mean, i- if you don't have one of the, the first two requirements in place, I'm not exactly sure a lot of that is, is terribly relevant.
Well, I'm going to here to tell you right now, the, the tree that was planted in my front yard through the Boulevard program does not meet the size.
So.
And I bought it through the program, so, but it doesn't meet these criteria. And it's a slow grower.
Sure. Is there, I mean, we can debate them individually or do we just want to strike those, those first items? You know, one, two, three, four, the first five items?
Which five items?
Under F or you're talking?
I'm looking at questions, mine are, mine are just bullet points.
Oh, well.
Oh, you don't have the rest of, you don't have the ordinance?
We've got that all left.
The marked up ordinance?
Marked up, it's probably, it's far to the back.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where we've been looking at.
Sorry.
Forgive me.
No problem.
Now we're all on the same.
It's the same, it's the same question.
Now we're literally on the same page, okay.
It just has more.
So it, so 2A, it sounds like we all probably want to strike that, right? The lineal foot requirement? Yeah, E, E2A.
So how do we, because I'm opposed, or I'm in agreeant that we should adjust this and, and get rid of most of this and at the end of the day, make it, you know, I, I agree with like what Tim said, like we, we have to have, like they have to submit a landscape, some, some sort of landscape plan. But if we don't have some sort of, you know, the, the one square foot by, you know, like that measure at a, at a minimum, you know, then, then how do we, you know, how does, what does Ian have to measure it on?
Well, I mean, I think if you look at number three, alternative compliance, I mean, at the, at the end of the day, they're going to submit a landscape plan. He's going to look at it and he's probably, if it's a bigger, I mean, we're not talking about single family home. But I mean, you know, for example, we got, you know, tonight again, you know, the plat, he's going to say, hey, either this makes sense or it doesn't make sense to him. And then if he's struggling with it, he's going to bring it to the planning and zoning and say, hey, does this make sense to you guys?
Well, that's that.
If it's a larger landscape plan, he's going to look for feedback or he's going to look for my feedback, you know, feedback from staff. And we're going to say, hey, based on our knowledge of this, it doesn't make sense. We need to add a few more things here. Or, you know, we have a contract planner that he can talk to too. So I think he's got the resources to do it. I just think that, you know, that gives them the flexibility. And I mean, if you see that alternate language there, there's all kinds of things that can look nice, you know, whether it's trees or, um.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's, and I, and I, and I like that. And I like the fact that we give it, give it a broad stroke so contractors and builders and stuff have the ability to be super flexible.
Right.
But I'm just, you know, if you have contractor, hey, you know, I mean, we've got two or three, you know, four big projects that are going to be coming, you know, and are in the works in town. Well, if, if one says, you know, here, here's my, here's my plan and.
Right.
You know, and, and we agree to that, well, then the next one comes and, you know, I just want to make sure that we've got something that.
Sure.
That Ian can kind of come back on and, and so we're consistent.
Right. If you keep E2B where it says all structures must have foundation plantings, shrubs, perennial grasses, you know, and then you keep the E2C, which it says all addition expansions or additional structures, two shrubs per 1,000 square feet, there's a measurement and then you keep the alternative language too, which gives you the, the buffer that you're looking for. But that one gives you a starting point of saying you should have at least two shrubs per 1,000 square feet.
Yeah, I think, I like the alternative compliance, but we have to have a minimum in there, I think, because.
And that's, we're that two.
Yeah.
Because some people might be like, okay, I can just meet this minimum. I don't have to do this back and forth with the city and just be done with it. And then some people are like, well, I don't want to do that. You know, then they have the alternative option to present a plan, maybe do a back and forth. It's just going to take more time, I assume, you know, more paperwork, bureaucracy, whatever. I, I think we need to give them a, here's a target of what we think is good.
That'd be our goal is to have something that they can bring it in the first. I mean, I will say like, in terms of turnaround, like on a lot of these, you know, we get that back to them right away. I mean, in a bigger subdivision or like a, for E, again, we've been working with them for six hours already. So if they submit a plan to us, within a week, Ian's going to say, hey, this works or it doesn't or it needs X, Y, and Z. So I don't know that, I mean, we want to make things, that isn't what's going to be a holdup. There's always, there's lots of other stuff, you know. Transformer times are six months out, so I know that's a problem right now. But, uh, but anyways, you know, I, I think, I think what we got right here is, is really feasible. Give them some basic guidelines. They can submit a plan. Give them some basic guidelines, they can submit a plan.
And then have that-
He can look at it, I can look at it, we can say, hey, it fits or it doesn't fit, we get back to them and they can, I mean, what I want is one tweak. Where they take it back once, they make the changes, and they bring it back, and we go, okay, looks good. And that, that way it's, it's timely, too.
Well, how much of this, we kind of mentioned guidelines, how much of this could be, it's still in this out there, could be guidelines, 'cause Ian's gonna review it anyway. So it gets staff approval, if that's approved at staff level.
Right.
And if there's opposition, if they don't agree with what Ian says, then it goes up the chain of, of appeal.
That's right.
So then you could just make a lot of this, to provide maximum flexibility, instead of an actual ordinance, it could be guidelines for landscape plans that could be approved at the staff level.
I think it's nice to have it in the ordinance, because there's always something that Ian can go back to and say, here's our ordinance.
Sure.
This is why-
Yeah.
It, it isn't just something that he made up out of nothing. It got voted on, it got approved by council, it got that kind of feed, feedback, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think we're all trying to get to the same place, where it's like, we wanna give developers some guidance, so they know it's not just a blank slate, so they know what to expect. Um, but at the same time, provide enough flexibility, so they can do something that's maybe creative, that achieves the same goals, but maybe not in the specific way that we have-
And that's, that's why I kinda like that, that wording from F two, where it says, here, you, you've developed this much square feet, we're gonna expect you to do landscaping of X amount of square feet. Right? And that's, that's about as vague as you can get, I think.
Let's still have a standard, sure.
Yeah. And then, I guess, one question I would have if I was reading this, is like, if, if we're requiring one square foot of landscaping, you know, how much square feet of landscaping is one tree considered? Is it, is it based upon like what its canopy's supposed to be, a maturity? Or, how do we do, right, 'cause at maturity, you might have this, you know, big tree, but when they plant it, it's pretty small, so... I guess maybe we just have, have to have that-
Maybe under definition we require.
Uh, uh, yeah. Um, so, I- Yeah, I, that's, that's my, my opinion. I, I, I think a nice vague, this is how much you're developing, this is how much landscaping we expect. These are the things, I guess, that we would expect to be considered as landscaping, shrubs, trees, uh, what it was, native grasses, um, whatever. And then, and if you don't wanna do that, submit another plan and we'll, we'll review it.
So, right now, I would say, remove E two A, keep E two B and C, and then keep that number three, which is, gives you your alternative compliance. I haven't made to F yet, we're not going there yet. That's a whole nother animal.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you.
So, I guess I would make the motion right now to remove E two A, keep E two B and C, and the E, number three, with all that-
Can I just, sorry? I was just gonna say, could I amend, so, for C, instead of applying to just all additions and expansions, should we just now make that apply to all, anything like a new building, expansions, everything? Instead of just, so this says additions, expansions, or additional structures, so this is assuming there's a building there already, not an empty site?
Well, that was, that was hoping that would fix the ones that already had existing buildings that were, that wanted to add on.
Yep, and, and it does that, but I think, for, for example, the EGAN one, they're starting with a blank slate, so I wouldn't, I would assume C doesn't apply to that. So I would say, let's make C also apply to a new build on an empty site, in addition to expansions and additions, right, so-
Oh, we can add that in, all addition, all new construction-
All new constructions.
Additional structures shall-
I guess I just read it under there, that would count, 'cause it says a thousand square feet of new construction.
Yeah. I, to me, to me, when I read that, I was like, okay, that's only, only an add-on.
The new construction is talking about the, yeah, I think we can just add the-
The wording for that.
Clarify it. That's, that's all I would amend to his motion, if that's all right.
Yeah.
Can we throw four in there as well?
Yeah, E four.
No, the compliance component?
Yeah, I mean, E three is another four.
I did not see that, yes.
Okay.
I was thinking it was all part of three.
No, 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 I, I, I guess I view four as-
Yes.
Oh, well, just, we'll second that motion. Add that extra new construction in there.
Do you have, do you have all that in?
Go through it again.
It's recorded, he can go back and listen to it.
With the addition and add E three and four.
Yep.
So I believe we have a motion from Mr. Egler.
And a second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There we go, that would be our recommendations.
Okay.
Are we still going through landscaping things here? You wanna tackle F?
Well, I, F, I have a hard troubles with this one.
Yeah.
And the biggest one is, the city has a parking lot that absolutely has no islands in it that I know of, and it has no plantings. It has the grass around it, and I'm a firm believer that's all you need in a big parking lot like that. If it's, you know, if it's on somebody's property, you know, I have a hard time enforcing them to put an island in their lot, which is something to plow around, and planting trees in the middle of a parking lot. If they wanna put trees there for shade, yes, but that would be at their discretion. Us to tell them to put an island or a tree, just is another-
I think one of the things-
...to lose parking lots, too.
Yeah, I think, I agree, there's a lot of places in town that look like they've been built and not ignoring this, including city properties.
Well, we need parking lots.
And, um, but I think one thing that's nice about this is it says, um, where was it? Somewhere in here, I believe, it says that retaining existing trees will count towards your, your landscaping requirement, which I think is something that's good. So if they have a big mature tree already, and they decide to keep it in their parking lot area, or put it, build an island around it, it should count towards their landscaping requirement, right? And not having to plant anything.
Yeah, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we have to put a tree in the middle of a parking lot, or, or an island in the middle of a parking lot. 'Cause, you know, your goal is to give the ultimate space of a parking lot.
I mean, I think, once again, with this one, I mean, my, my thought process was just requiring a landscaping plan for your parking lot.
That's fine.
You know, because I think that we still would wanna see, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, you know. I know when I was in Blue Earth, we owned a, the city owned an office building.
Yeah.
That was fun. Dealing with rent, renters and stuff like that, and we ended up having to redo the parking lot. And we did put islands in, because it was a beautification thing, and also was a water, a water quality issue. We put some, some islands that drain, and allowed the water to drain slower. Um, so, I mean, I could see what the thought process was behind it, because, yeah, I mean, is the parking lot exactly an attractive thing? No. I think that, you know, if you're looking for a more attractive amenity in a different space, you'd probably go with a more attractive parking lot. But at the end of the day, I mean, is it, is it really beneficial for us to require that, or is it, is it meaningful?
And where that parking lot is, that's in min dots right away, and min dot would not allow any structures or plantings out there. So, it had to be altered for that, so, I mean, you have that.
No, I mean, I guess, like I said, I think as long as you require a landscaping plan after building a new parking lot, I don't know that you, I think you could probably strip most of this out.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that.
I mean, the one thing I do like is, you know, the bounded curb. It's nice to have that, we want it to be a curbed parking lot, if it's a brand-new one.
Yeah.
You know, like, for example, like, I don't know how it'll work in that parking lot between, behind the Legion. If, if the city ends up paving that, when we end up paving it, I'm not sure if it'll have curb or not. I think if we were building a brand-new one, it would be good, because otherwise you have that water issue again.
Yes.
Where you're creating all this impervious surface. And if it doesn't have storm, and they don't all have storm, then that water's just gonna be running off into a ditch or something, or into somebody's backyard. And, I mean, that's, that's what we wanna try and prevent there, too, so.
Which is, you know, a good example, that is actually KM Telecom Stadium parking lot, it all runs to the ditch.
Well, that's a good example, if you go to like Mayo's parking lot, you know, the spadings is on the other side of that, and that's definitely an issue, you know, where there's impervious on Main Street, and it tends to get into that. Now, he's got impervious, too, with the gravel parking lot. So anyway, suffice to say, I think curb would have been helpful in a couple of those cases.
Yes. Okay. So, so for F, you're saying, for new parking lots, have a curb and have a landscape plan?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, those are the things that I think are most important, like, like you said.
And then we go back to the-
And then, you know, there's gonna be things, you know, different people are gonna wanna spend different amounts of money on, or make it nicer or not. Um, you know, I think having this in place now is a good idea, because we do have a big parking lot that's gonna get built this year at the new apartment complex. So those folks over there, they're not doing parking underneath the building, they're doing a large, they wanted like a four to one ratio, which is-
Okay.
It's a lot of stalls.
Yeah.
Well, we need to have some guidelines for them, so that we don't have just all that runoff going in the creek.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's just my thought. I mean, you guys think the other thing.
I like that.
But to me, like, you know, this code was written for, you know, a different standard possibly than what we're looking at.
So in terms of F, and forgive me, it's highlighted, is that a recommendation, or is that part of the code?
Well, I mean, my recommendation would be to strip that area out, and just say, off-street parking area requires a landscaping plan, and it requires, you know, it'd be bounded by a raised curb, so they can retain soil moisture. I mean, those are the two things I think that are most important, otherwise, I mean, as I said, that's just my thought. I wanna try and make it simpler, you know, and I don't know that we, like you said, I mean, we, we wanna be able to meet the code, too, and, and not, yeah.
Yeah, and the very last sentence of that F two, with the preservation of existing trees, shrub, and natural vegetation, um, maybe including calculation of required minimum landscape area. Obviously, wouldn't make sense with what you're proposing for the parking. So I would say, maybe we move that up as a, an addition to E two, in the calculation for their building landscape requirements, if that's all right.
Yeah, either that, or you could make that like F one, and that could just be the, the guideline, like, we talked about basic guidelines. We want to have curb, and then if you already have pre-existing trees or shrubbery, we'll allow that to be included as part of the landscape plan, part of your calculation. I mean, I think we wanna keep that turf, that turf, that E also probably could be kept as well. Turf, grass, and permitted within landscaped areas around the parking lot. I mean, so I think, you know, I think you're right, maybe just, maybe you take that and you move it up to the top here, and then we just eliminate those, about the islands, frankly. That's probably the biggest part we're gonna eliminate. And then we're giving them a basic guideline, so that when they submit their landscape plan, it's the basics that they need to have. Otherwise, Ian has to draw it all himself, and I mean, it'll take him a while.
Did you catch that, Ian? That's what we're asking for?
Um, someone should state it clearly.
So we're gonna strike F one, A, B, C, D completely. We'd keep E, but we'd put it under, number two would become number one. And we'd add that E into that. And, and then, then we have to add a-
And then probably just rephrase, have to be, off-street parking, you know, parking lots shall require a landscaping plan.
We have to add curb in there.
You're keeping D?
Uh, keeping E.
Yeah, D, I think, well, something along D, we wanna talk about the curb part, too.
So maybe instead of said, instead of saying islands, maybe D would say, parking lots should be bounded by a raised curb, or approved equivalent, and shall contain mulch, or something like that. And then you'd have, so you'd have D, E, and then two, and that'd become like number one, and then A and B. And we can finesse that language, too, I don't know exactly, maybe we just say, parking lots shall be bounded by a raised concrete curb, or approve equivalent, and then put a, put a dot in it. Does that make sense?
Is that a motion?
That is a motion. Does that repeat it?
Democracy right here, folks, not always clean. I'm talking a lot more than I want to here, I'll take that one.
We have a motion per Mr. Egler. Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That would be our recommendation there. So are we on to G here, all plant material must?
Correct.
Or the, the thirty percent species requirement, H?
H, yeah.
Yeah. We talked about making that requirement fifty percent at the last meeting, instead of thirty percent.
I'm okay with that. It's nice to have a variety. You don't want always the same one, 'cause if you have the same tree, all of a sudden you have one disease coming and wipe the whole town out.
And G four gives the credit for the existing.
Yeah, it's, it's written there again, too, you're right.
I don't have any heartburn with anything under G.
So I guess I'll make a motion to change G, or, sorry, to change H to fifty percent, instead of thirty percent, then?
We have a motion to change fifty percent of the required number of trees shall be of the same species. Do we have a second? A second. A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Takes care of that.
And the next one was about J, which is talking about specific sizes for planting.
Where did this come from, or where did this data come from?
This was already in the code. But I don't know where.
I'm not an arborist, and in a position to really comment on this at all, so, if, if it's reasonable and in line with the surrounding communities.
Well, I think if people are planting trees, they're gonna do the best they can, and-
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we're not, I don't think we have to go out and measure the diameter of the trunks, or see if they put a five-gallon pot. If somebody planted an evergreen shrub and wanted it to grow, I think we're fine with. So I don't know if, if we have these sizes in there, it ain't gonna hurt, but, you know.
There's no enforcement mechanism.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, most residential trees are gonna be way bigger than this anyways. You know, this is more for like, a bigger, like, EGAN, so, we say they have to have a hundred trees, they're gonna put the, the stock trees.
Yeah, and you want a minimum.
Right. That's, that's what's gonna happen, half of them are gonna die.
Yeah.
You know, that's how it's gonna work out there. But I think for, I mean, like, when I got the Boulevard tree, I mean, it's already, it's much larger than this, too, you know, if you get the measurement around the, the, the tree itself.
Do we wanna change the word shall to should? Kinda give us ability to have, have them give us options? Alternatives?
Maybe like, what, what about like, the minimum size of plantings guidelines shall be as follows? It's a guideline, doesn't mean that we necessarily stick with that.
I like that.
When they start getting should and may, then I, I just kinda get hesitant, but we're giving them a guideline.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's what it is. Some more, a lot more landscaping that we ever wanna deal with, ever again. All right, I don't care.
Not variance after variance for the next five to twelve months.
That's true, that's true.
Do we, do we need to vote on that as well?
Well, why don't we do this whole section, and then, and then just, if, if people are comfortable with it.
Yeah.
Sure.
And that's a small change. Then we, so then we'd be going down to L.
Well, I know you didn't mark K, but K is not marked, but are we requiring people to mulch their landscape? 'Cause, you know, it says, it says mulch or stone.
It doesn't say they need to use mulch, it just says what it has to be.
No, I think just if you are going to do this kind of landscaping, those are the requirements. I don't think there's any requirement that you have to do landscaping, you can put grass root up to your house if you want, but I think the, the idea there is maybe to avoid, um, other materials, is that kind of what it is?
I think it's about the depth of two inches.
Yeah, the depth of two inches, I think.
And over the weed barrier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty standard stuff, anyway, isn't it? Isn't that all stuff's installed?
Well, and on some, uh, true. All right. We'll leave it.
Okay.
Let's not, let's not make more room.
I don't have any heartburn.
Okay, so keep L, and then last is N, which talks about, um, issuing building permits and requiring that they have a security deposit in place, so... So I just proposed inserting a little bit of language in there that says that the city may require the security, so it's not like a true requirement, but if we think we need it, we have the power to do it. That was what I thought was gonna add, sure. This is another thing that's been in our code, but-
That's not gonna be a legal issue, is it? Where somebody might say, hey, you didn't make them have a deposit, but you made me, that's not fair.
Not in our code.
Really?
It's a strong code.
I, I agree, but I'm sure there's a lot of things we could write in our code that might not stand up to legal scrutiny, right?
Depending on the personality, anything and everything could become a legal issue.
That's the thing, I mean, I don't think you can ever stop somebody, if they wanna fight it, they're gonna fight it.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, from a practical standpoint, like, there's probably people that we work with all the time, where like, they followed through and done what we've asked, we can probably say, yeah, you don't need to do it. Or it's, you know, a small enough significance that we don't care. Um, so I, I don't know, that's, that's just my thought about putting that. We might require a deposit or not, so... Is the, the amount that people have had to, um, bring for these landscape plans significant in like scope of their work?
No.
Okay, so.
Is this, uh, secured, this deposit, is it related to item L one up above, where, you know, you can't plant in the winter? Is that, is that sort of what the intent of this is, trying to achieve?
That's kinda the way I read it.
They're gonna actually do their landscaping plan, at the end of the day, 'cause if, if we have to do it, it's gonna cost more. You know, I mean, I think that's what it's for, whether you actually follow through and do it or not. I mean, I could definitely see where we take that may out, like I said, I'm not sure that may is a good word there, either, I can see where you're going with it, Ian. But I think, you know, we'll just say we shall require the landscape plan, we've talked about that in all these other cases. You know, it doesn't have to be a complicated one, it doesn't have to be anything crazy, it just has to be the plan. Just part of their packet of application documents is a landscape plan for all of it, that's how it works usually, so, I don't know. 'Cause I, you know, you can't pick and choose, 'cause we do have some developers who are more conscientious than some that aren't. At the end of the day, there's some of them that are, are gonna do it easier, or they're gonna follow through better, and, but we still have to still keep the same, same regulations, I think.
Yeah, 'cause who knows, ten years down the road, who will be building, so you wanna make sure it's-
So when is the security returned? If it, if it's not utilized?
Well, typically, we do an out-process of permits, um, you know, so people will pay a fee upfront when we do like a landscape plan, and also the document review.
Hmm.
And so in essence, they put that down as a deposit. And based on, you know, Ian's hours, then we see how many hours it costs, or what the full costs of the permit were. At the end of that process, when we close up the permit, then we'll either issue a reimbursement, or we'll, if it's a bigger developer, they may move it into a different project, or something like that. Or they'll have some money on account, or something like that.
So I guess our, our recommendation is to leave J, L, and N the way they are? Currently written?
Well, N, we'll say shall require, not may require.
Yeah.
'Cause I don't think that was in there at all.
Or you could just take out the revision.
I think we just take the revision out.
I mean, it's just, yeah, 'cause shall is right after that. The developers, contractor, or property owners shall deposit a security with the city.
I think we just take out the part that would potentially be amended.
Part that I propose to be inserted, yeah, just take that out.
Yeah.
Anything else on this particular topic? I hope not.
Uh, no, I think I've got everything I need to move forward with that.
And we'll bring those recommendations to council on Wednesday, so...
But we never got a motion and a second on those three.
Sure. Can we get a motion to approve, or pardon me, can I get a motion to, covering the tail end of our discussion as it pertains to the landscaping ordinance amendment?
J, L, and N?
Yep.
I will make the motion that we approve changes that we added to J, L, and N.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would be our recommendation. Uh, next public hearing, screening ordinance amendments.
So I just included the entire screening section in there, but I didn't really have any recommendations of things to change. When Mr. Grant, he was in here last week, it was, I think we talked a lot about, um, the part that talks about if you wanna use like a hedge for screening as opposed to a fence, you know? Like, what does it mean to have like two staggered rows, and how, what's the spacing have to look like? And do they have to be evergreens, or can they be other species? But I think the way the code is written right now makes the most sense to me, but...
So my issue with this is, I guess I'm not clear on the definition of hedge, 'cause when I think of hedge, I don't think of staggered rows of evergreen trees. So my opinion should be that maybe we need to either define hedge, or change the word hedge to something else.
What is your definition of hedge?
Uh, to me, a hedge is like bushes that you have to trim, and they kinda form a natural fence, you know, not trees planted in a row, not 12 feet apart, but, and really, what I think of hedges would probably never have, uh, what was the requirement here, like year-round foliage? So, is that, maybe that's just me?
I guess when I think of hedges, I think of evergreens, that typically do have year-round foliage. But, but I mean, you know, we certainly can add a definition for hedge in there, I mean, if you look at the dictionary definition, a fence or boundary formed by close growing bushes or shrubs, so...
So an evergreen tree's not a bush or shrub then, right, so...
True.
But, but yeah, I mean, that's the disconnect for me, is just kinda the word.
There is evergreen shrubs.
Well, that'd be, that'd be perfect then. But ours has trees, so I, and I'm fine with having staggered rows of evergreen trees be screening, that seems acceptable. And I think we've got places that utilize that in the area, right? Is it, uh...
Well, right behind, right behind the bus garage right here, they've got staggered rows of trees.
Yeah, and Wilkers, is that right?
Yep, he has some too.
He's got staggered trees for screening too?
'Cause they're real small, but they are there.
They'll get bigger, right?
Yeah.
So, that seems fine, and if there are evergreen hedges that aren't trees, you know, that to me seems fine as well. I guess another question would be is, uh, are burms acceptable?
Not, I'm not a fan, not in town anyway.
It doesn't look like it's in the code right now to have a berm.
Right.
That'd be a change.
Berm creates a, a water issue. Now you have flooding issues.
Sure.
Potentially.
Yeah.
You know, you definitely can't put a berm anywhere near an existing creek, river, or lake.
Right. I think one of the things we talked about with the A and A thing is, I thought, was it, Tim, maybe you mentioned that there was a requirement they were supposed to put, they were supposed to put a berm.
In the original plat, that was supposed to be a berm, now that plat pred, you know, predates this code change. So I mean, it isn't, that isn't an issue, 'cause it's grandfathered in, but if they were gonna extend that berm, I mean, we would've had to make some kind of allowance for that, that's true.
Right, and that's what I'm wondering is, so maybe in that specific instance, you know, where a berm in that location makes sense, and would we consider that acceptable screening?
Then have, they'd have to make sure they have a proper, uh, water plan, of making sure the water wasn't going anywhere near the berm and causing the flooding issue for the properties next to them.
Yeah, and I think, I think in that case, we probably would've considered the berm as a possible solution. Simply, in that case, it's a commercial, industrial versus a residential, and I think they had, they had the dirt to do it. You know, they had that huge, you know, hill of dirt that they, I don't know where they shipped it off to, but, I mean, so like, I mean, I think we even talked with them originally when they were, they were benching, and I said, hey, why don't you, why don't you finish the berm that was originally in this plat? And they chose not to do it, I don't know exactly what EGAN is doing actually, we'll talk about that in a little bit. But, and we certainly could add a sentence in here that talks about burms, um, maybe as a, as a possibility, but I don't know that we would necessarily wanna make that a direct, I mean, I don't think that's a preferred option, generally speaking. I think fences, good fences make good neighbors, usually the best way to go, that's our thing.
You know, like, your hedge is defined in here pretty well, a hedge shall can be landscaped of at least two staggered rows of evergreen trees, so... That's under C.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but that doesn't allow a evergreen bush to be used as, as screening, is I guess what I'm getting at.
Um, well, I think part of it has to do with height, like, um...
'Cause a bush is not gonna get ten.
Yeah, 'cause, for example, it's usually six feet tall, but I know if...
I had a rental property that had bushes 10 feet tall.
That's why it has to be an evergreen.
Not when I was done with them, but...
Like, um, in the, in the landscaping ordinance in J, when it talks about, you know, what's an evergreen tree, it says it's supposed to be six foot height, that's why it says evergreen tree in the screening section. It has to be six foot tall.
Yep.
Does that mean, um, if, 'cause I know a lot of times people like to trim their evergreen trees up, so they can ride their mower underneath them, that kinda defeats the purpose of screening, so, like, would we require them to not have it trimmed then?
Well, but you gotta allow them to trim them, because they will die from the ground up if you do let them touch the ground.
Right, but if you trim them up six feet to ride your mower under it, you, you're not screening anymore, 'cause you're not blocking the six feet that we wanted the tree in the first place.
I guess what's the question?
The question is, is if they plant the trees, and then they trim them up, they're not screening, so are we gonna go back and be like, hey, you like, you screwed this up, you need to put in a fence now?
Well, like I said, I think fences are the best option usually. Aquavidi would be the one I was thinking of, that, those do grow pretty high. I think that kind of evergreen would be, would be something we'd see, and we do see it in a couple spots in town here.
So, I, I would like to see more options in terms of a berm or non-tree hedges. And obviously, if they're doing a landscape plan, that's, it has to include screening in it, right, for certain properties. If they choose an option that we don't think is appropriate for whatever reason, you know, then they, they won't be able to use it, so... I don't think that's, we're gonna end up with properties all over that are just bermed all the way around.
Yeah, I'd rather see the berm only if it's in a split between like residential and commercial, I just think that's the most appropriate, where it's a greater scale, otherwise I think you're gonna create water issues.
Yeah.
We run into that all over, like in Northwest, where people have channeledized water into somebody else's yard, and, I mean, my goal is always to keep the city out of that. We're giving them a landscape plan, we're saying they can berm, now we're gonna be on the hook, because they're gonna say the city authorized that.
'Cause a few years back, there was a berm, a pile in northeast, it was just a pile of dirt, it was, when the builder quit building and they left it, and that berm, and it came, yep, and it became an issue with the city, and the city because the water became an issue, and we had flooding issues over there because of that berm.
Sure.
So I, I think burms are a bad, bad plan, they shouldn't, they're, all they're gonna cause is headaches down the road. 'Cause if you don't maintain them, and now you get the water flow, and then you start building more properties around it, even in residential area, they, you know...
The only thing I could see with like, with the EGAN one, is if they would've continued that, they're required to have a water plan. Like, they're required to show us where the water on their lot's gonna go, and make sure that they have a pond. You know, so that one there, like I said, I could see where that one could possibly work, but I know, I agree, I think generally speaking, I, I think it's a bad choice to do burms in, in residential areas.
'Cause all you're gonna create down the problem, down the road.
Well, it's been dry the last three years, but in a bad wet year, you know, different parts of town, you got, you got underground water that's still moving pretty good.
Yes.
You know, underground creeks have been covered up by concrete and stuff, so I, I just, I'd be really hesitant. I know if I can, up on, you know, up in Little's, you know, there's, there's houses that are not in the right spots, and if things were bermed up there, it would be, one person would be safe and dry, and the next person would be getting, you know, three feet of water in their face.
Over by Diamond Park, that area, they're standing, the, the water table, it might be drying out this year, but normally, there was retaining, there was a window wells, and there was standing water in there year-round. In the window wells, and there's more, multiple sump pumps that run in the winter over there, 'cause that's, that water level's that high. So, you know, you'd create troubles.
Personally, I don't see anything on here that really needs to be updated, unless...
I mean, it all ties together to the land, with the landscaping plan, and it's all reviewed.
And, you know, you've got, what, three E in terms of screened plantings, so I would think that covers just about anything you'd wanna put in the ground that's a plant of some nature, be it tree, shrub, bush, whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah, but I could see adding a definition of, of hedge in there, I think that's fair. But I mean, other than that, I mean, I, I don't know.
Gotcha.
Obviously, the public is not clamoring.
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah.
For our public hearing.
For, for the sake of, of formality, I will open the public hearing, and I will close the public hearing as well. Outside of adding a, a definition of hedge, do we wanna do anything with this?
I think most of this is pretty good.
Yeah, I, I...
And it's one page too, that's, that's always good too. Keep all the ordinance just to one page, and I think we'll be in good shape.
I'd like to do that.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to, to define hedge?
I would, I would make a motion to clarify the definition of hedge in this ordinance.
But otherwise approve as written?
Yes.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would be our recommendation.
Alright.
Final thing this evening, preliminary plat for Egan Fields.
Alright, so, you'll recall from a few months ago that we did the rezoning, reguiding for this project, so now we're at the phase of plating for this project. So basically, what's proposed is just a pretty simple one lot, one block of plat, so that it's recorded with the various easements. Within this, uh, project, we've discussed a few different things having to do with street access, that was probably the most, um, the most attention of this project, um, simply because you'll note that Ninth Street Southeast kinda just dead ends right at the edge of the property. Um, and it was done that way just because, you know, the intention was to subdivide it further beyond this, but now that there's a single buyer, it's a single development, uh, there's a question of, well, what do we do with the road now? And so, with all of the different options that we threw out there, what we landed on was having a system of access easements and maintenance agreements in place instead. So, um, with that, there's a few different recommendations of conditions coming with approval of this preliminary plat, you'll see there in my stack report. Just pretty simple, making sure all the development fees are paid, getting that access easement and maintenance agreement recorded with the properties. And then there are a few other easements that were missing, but were recommended by the city engineer that were asking to be updated in the plat, um, and then just finishing up with the site plan before the development occurs.
So basically, Ninth Street becomes the entrance into the property.
Yeah, so, um, I think I glued it in the package, that's their basic site plan, but I can bring it up here on the TV too.
For the sake of formality, I will open and close the public hearing, gentlemen, your thoughts, any questions?
Has EGAN already seen these, the, the engineers' comments?
Yeah, they've been, they've been communicated.
Okay, so, 'cause I'm looking at this water main easement, and I, I believe we've talked prior about having to put a, a loop in there for a south fork, so I'm assuming that's what this easement is intended to be for. And it looks like he's trying to follow where they intend to run their driveway?
Yeah.
By zigzagging down through there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Looks good.
Uh, if there's no other questions, I'll look for a motion, please.
I'd make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That would be our recommendation.
Alright, thank you very much.
Any other business we should discuss tonight, gentlemen? All adjourned in the meeting, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got that part down.
I don't know, we gotta get that...